Jim to run us through that.
There's no need this evening for an executive session, so you can remove that from your agenda. And I'm asking you to move agenda item number six up to the beginning of the meeting. We have some guests and visitors that I'd like to move right up to the beginning. So ask for the community to vote on that, please.
We need a, we need a motion to vote on it.
To amend the agenda to move it.
To amend the agenda Fran, is that you Fran?
Yes, it is. I can't get on video.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Susan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Very good. We can move on then, I think. We'll move right on. Jim, did you want to do your report or did you want to do the guest first?
No, we'll do guests and visitors first, and that Mr. Payne is going to take care of that for us.
Very good. So Tim, are you, are you up and on?
I am.
All right, we're off. And everybody's got a beard these days.
I can't grow it on the top of my head, Tim.
If you figure out how to do that, let me know.
I just want to, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Colkeen in the chair for some time at the start of the meeting. This is in recognition for a missed opportunity last year. Several of the awards we give when we gather as family and staff is the Patriot Pride Award. It's considered the highest honor at the middle school. In the past, we would recognize one female and one male student. However, in the age of COVID, what we did was change that process. And we had each of the eighth grade teams nominate an outstanding student to receive, and I carried one of these home. They're huge. So I have two more on my desk, but this evening what I'd like to do, and I appreciate the time of the valuable time of the board to do this, is recognize three individual students from last year's eighth grade class. They are current ninth graders. And if folks would indulge me, I have to pull some notes up, so I'll be flying blind a little bit. But I wanted to recognize, and I see all three of them here. At least I see Haley's unicorns and hedgehogs. So I think we're good. So let us start. I'm going to go in alphabetical order by team, and I'll recognize the students and their family. So again, this is the Patriot Pride Award. This is given by each eighth grade team. It's in recognition of outstanding leadership, citizenship, and academic achievement while a student at the middle school. It is not an award that recognizes the highest GPA. It's not valedictorian in the traditional sense. Teams are free to give this to a student who they feel is an outstanding citizen and a, and a good human being, which I think is the more admirable goal for everybody. So Team Delta is an eighth grade team. They are the combination team folks are probably familiar with. They have seventh and eighth graders. Their nominee, and I see her present this evening, is Haley Decker. Her mom and dad are Raymond and Helen Decker. Haley, if you don't mind, I'm going to read the comments that your teachers included with the award. Haley exemplifies the three Bs at Mount Anthony Middle School. She's always respectful to her peers, especially her teachers. She never complains and has always has a positive attitude. She is responsible inside and outside of school, always prepared, an excellent role model for her fellow classmates. She never gives up. She asks questions consistently, gives her very best effort, no matter how difficult the task may seem. She's not just a great student, but a wonderful person. The members of Team Delta are very proud to present her with the 2020 Patriot Pride Award for Team Delta. So, and I'm actually using the next person's award as my prop this evening, so I appreciate the patience. We have two more teams from the eighth grade. The next team is Team Gloucesterberry. Team Gloucesterberry nominated Gianna Ferry. Her mom and dad are Gina and David Ferry. I got to see them last night. They are proud parents and they should be. Team Gloucesterberry was proud to nominate Gianna as their Patriot Pride Award recipient. She is a high achieving student among very many high achievers. What made the choice clear for the team is that she would not have sought this recognition for herself. Given the choice, she would most likely nominated many other students for the recognition. That is the type of the student and human that she is. During the all remote experience that was spring 2020, Gianna was a regular during office hours on Google Meet for the simple reason of staying connected to school. In the case of social studies, and this is a note from Mr. D'Amelio. She attended daily simply to ask insightful questions about historical topics. Much like being a New York Rangers fan, I think that's for you, Gianna, from him. I'm not sure. This season, she was not in it for the glory, but because she enjoyed it. Gianna is a good citizen, motivated learner. Student like Gianna would remind us that all the future still belongs to the kind and the inspired. So congratulations, Gianna Ferry, an outstanding student from Team Gloucesterberry at the middle school. Our final recipient is from Team Oasis. This is Ella Saccio. Her mom is Nancy Schuster. Team Gloucesterberry, or Team Oasis, excuse me. Team Oasis is proud to recognize Ella Saccio as their 2020 recipient of the Patriot Pride Award. She is a kind and loyal friend. She has possesses a great sense of humor. She is an incredibly dedicated student, applying her intellectual powers and curiosity across all subject areas. This is a note from Ms. Albertson. She's also an active, committed, and talented member of the theater club for the past two years. Also very involved in chorus and band. I would add that beyond theater and arts, she is also an adventurer. She is now a member of the middle, of the high school cross-country running team, and one of the few athletes that I've ever seen who consistently smiles throughout races, which is a rarity. So I want to recognize Ella Saccio as the 2020 recipient for Team Oasis for the Patriot Pride Award. And again, I thank everybody for the time. Families, I will be in touch with you to make sure that you receive this award. Please know that your name is also inscribed in a permanent plaque in the middle school. So you feel free to bring younger siblings, grandmas and grandpas and aunts and uncles to come and stare at the wall and admire your, your name in perpetuity. So again, congratulations to all three recipients, outstanding students at the middle school. And I'm proud to be their principal.
Well, we are very proud to have them as students within our system. And, and on behalf of the board, I congratulate them all and wish them the very, very best. Very good. Thank you.
Outstanding Principal Payne, and it's heartwarming to hear some good stories and wonderful testimony to our students in such a difficult year. So thank you for bringing that tonight.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
To the chairperson, do, do we want to do guests and visitors next? So the presentation is uncontinuous, could take a while. I don't know if there are any, but we could ask.
I, I miss that, Jim.
I don't know if there, I'm looking on the screens to see if we have any guests. I mean, any public comments if we did that now?
Well, I, I think we ought to stick right with the agenda. Why don't we go with your report? We'll go with Spinelli Field and education, and then we'll have public comment. So we stick with agenda. Thank you.
It just could be a while before we get there. So.
Well, that's the way it is.
Just giving you the option. So this is going to be the easiest superintendent report ever, because I have two outstanding individuals to give the report on the continuous improvement plan. Our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Melissa Senical, and the Assistant Superintendent Laura Boudreaux, along with your two principals, that's who's giving you the continuous improvement plan. I'm just welcoming them. So Melissa, are you starting?
I'm the little bit, and then she's taken over on the
All right. I, you know, this is the third, third time we've done this. So, all right, go ahead.
Professionals. I even fixed my name, my screen. So we're getting, we're getting good. So So we want to, I'm going to share my screen in just a moment, and we're, thank you for having us tonight. And it's a state requirement to share our district and school continuous improvement plans with all of you. We had hoped to do this a little over a year ago. And then COVID happened, and it was, the state allowed us to postpone. We are proud to present our continuous improvement plans. Prior to the pandemic, our leadership team worked closely to develop the district, which we presented to the SVSU board. And then also the building level plans that feed right off of that district level plan. So I'm going to share my screen, and Melissa's going to kick us off. Okay. Okay. Okay.
So again, really thank you. You can see that our continuous improvement plans for MAU and the district are a three-year plan. The changes that have occurred since maybe the last time we did any kind of presentations about this is a shift to using the data to set goals for improvement and to monitor our goals. And those came through ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act in 2016. That shift from accountability to continuous improvement to make sure that we are better and we have growth for everyone. So where does a continuous improvement plan fit? We have educational quality standards and Act 77 appearing in 2014 and 13 respectively. And we wanted to make sure that in Vermont, that we focus on accountability and continuous improvement efforts. I want to make sure we did that. And that includes through the vein of definitely grade seven through 12, new requirements for personalization of learning and proficiency-based learning. Our continuous improvement plan is a constant review and measurement of action. And our SVSU continuous improvement plan at the district was used as a foundation to drive the development of each school's continuous improvement plan. And again, you're going to get snippets of that through both of those MAU principals. Our vision, Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union is committed to developing lifelong learners who contribute to their community and succeed in a diverse and evolving global society. I turn it over to Principal Payne to share the middle school's vision.
Helpful if I'm unmuted, I guess. So the shared vision for the middle school is to provide consistent expectations and engaging instruction to help students grow and raise their achievement. Leadership team developed and reviewed the shared vision with our entire faculty during professional development opportunities before the start of the school year. And we remind and restart each faculty meeting with a review of this vision.
Passing the time to Principal Nixon.
Thank you. Mount Anthony Union High School, we believe that learning for all should be challenging, diverse, and relevant to the demands of the 21st century. Teaching and learning are best accomplished when all members take ownership of the educational process and commit to achievement and personal growth. To face the demands of the 21st century, Mount Anthony Union High School students will pursue a course of challenging, diverse, and relevant study in traditional academic areas while acquiring the fluency and technology essential to future success.
Thank you. At the district level, we have five goals. Our schools are only allowed three, but our district goals are in all of our schools. And goal number one is English Language Arts. Goal number two is safe and healthy. That would be social, emotional, behavioral. And there's equity throughout all of the goals, but heavily in goal number two. Goal number three is math. Goal number four is science. And then goal number five is personalization, flexible pathways. The Mount Anthony MAU broad areas of focus are English Language Arts, Safe and Healthy, and Math. And when we go through each of those three, you're going to hear a little bit of revisions that meet the needs of both our middle and high school. And those principals will discuss that. Our first goal, English Language Arts, again, we used a data analysis of the most recent student achievement and found through data analysis that we had to focus, our area was on an evidence-based literacy practices for all of our students. Even in the past year, we have made progress towards the highlights of that goal. Again, we're in year one of looking at that. And so Laura, next slide for the highlight. I get to share all of these highlights. I'm going to specifically focus on MAU to thank the staff, Chris, Chris McGlyer, and also Heather Voice and others from the English Department who vetted a primary resource and then implemented that primary resource during this very challenging year. And they did it successfully and continue to do that. And so now I'll turn it over to, to our Principal Payne for his goal number one.
So thanks, Melissa. So in addition to the primary source, we benefit from having worked with an outside coach to develop an internal coach. So now we have a member of our faculty who supports instruction, not only in the core subject area, the resource. There's also the intervention piece. We've spent quite a bit of time going back through and looking at a flow chart that we have every kid go through, and as, you know, we're making sure that we're meeting them in the specific areas of need that they need with regards to reading and the writing. Going forward with that in place and that we've just gone through another transition period incoming kiddos to the middle school. All of them would have been screened successfully using the coach's input and teachers who are sending them to us. The things that need to continue is PD, as we want to make sure that we are consistently using the best interventions and we're consistently using the resource. Folks know sometimes you have change of teachers, change of teams. You want to make sure that everybody has the PD. The other piece, of course, is now we're several years into this. We need to make sure that we're assessing what we're doing, and it's actually making the progress that we hope it is making. And I would, I will say this, I'll add this. Melissa and I talked about this, my data teams. One of their bright moments in a challenging COVID year is that when kids took the local assessments, the ELA score did not fall. And so that's a, that's a good thing. That's a building block for us for next year as we are looking to do the rebound work and the recovery work that we're working on. Melissa, did you need me to cover anything else?
No, you, excellent. Mr. Nixon.
Yeah, our, one of our change ideas is to work on tiered instruction, is develop tools and structures to support our ELA teachers so they can begin to implement evidence-based practices for literacy within that tiered model of instruction and for participating in database decision-making to inform instruction. So we began the process before COVID hit of developing data coaches at the high school. So that we can, in each department, so we can begin to, to look at some of our standardized test scores and to drill down and to figure out where our strengths and weaknesses lie, so we can identify those weaknesses and collectively work on those to improve instruction for our students.
So I'm going to hop into goal number two, Safe and Healthy. Again, this is the social, emotional, behavioral goal that we have. Really important as we look at the whole child that is run just academics. And so based on all of the scores from several different references that you'll see here, we found that we really need to focus on a consistent and efficient data gathering process in order to make those next steps for instruction and also intervention and progress monitor. This particular goal, I am really happy to say we should have hit maybe a little bit higher. And so we'll may, maybe have to adjust that because thanks to our SVSU behavioral coach and all the people that she has in each building, including our middle school and high school, have gone above and beyond in creating that system. Specifically, I would say that the training that Jessa Ordway has done in both buildings for Swiss training, and again, this Swiss training is how we would track the behaviors and internally look to see where we have to have interventions and how things are working with monitoring progress. Mr. Payne.
As Miss Senical was pointing out, the use of data, so we do use Swiss in the building. I'm interested to continue the conversation with Melissa and Jonathan because there are areas where it can continue. Everybody's heard that the smarter the, the data you put in, the better output on that. As we kind of gear up for next year, and we talk about the recovery work, one of the things that Laura has been really good about emphasizing is social, emotional is going to be your first step. You got to rebuild the community. You got to increase engagement for kids because you have some kids that school has not been a success for the last year. And so one of the pieces that, again, Jessa Ordway has been very helpful, not only in the data piece, but also connecting us with professional development, John Kida. This is restorative practices. We had an earlier conversation in the Ed Committee, Gavin talking about this a little bit. Looking at different ways that, you know, teaching kids expectations, when they don't meet the expectations, how do we help them make it whole with the community and work their way back in as a member? We're going to have to do it differently. And so John Kida's work is around restorative practices and using what are called circles, not only to build community, but also to have kids, you know, show that they can meet the expectations and that reenter a community. So that, that's good work. John Kida, he's already worked with several members of the middle school. We're hoping to pilot some of that work during the summer recovery work and then include more of the faculty as we enter the fall. So that should be good stuff. And I have gone through it. John Kida does a really nice job, and it has lots of opportunities in a middle school setting.
Mr. Nixon.
This part of our CIP is going to be a major school-wide initiative beginning in the fall. And we're going to begin introducing, reintroducing tier one to, to all of our staff and to have year-long training in that area. We're consistently using the Center for Restorative Justice. We have Bennington College students coming in and working with our students. We have a behaviorist and our clinicians. For years, what happened is our students would have issues based on social, emotional issues, and they would end up becoming disciplinary problems, and then they would get suspended. And then they would come back to school, and they would go back into the classroom, and those issues would arise again, and they would get suspended. And it was a vicious ongoing cycle, but it was never, the behavior itself was never addressed. And some of the things that we're going to look at in the fall is how do we get these students to recognize why that behavior is an inappropriate behavior? What, what triggers that behavior? How do we work on that behavior to modify it so that students can understand it when they realize there are certain triggers being presented to them? And to change the whole focus of how we're doing discipline at the high school next year.
Thank you. The last goal I'll speak about is math at the district level. And we found with our most current data that we should be looking at evidence-based conceptual mathematical practices and conceptual math instruction and resources is a lot different than some of the math that maybe some of us had gone through. So having our teachers have an understanding of teaching conceptual math and having the resources for that. And that's for all students. Speaking of the resources, I would highlight for mathematics, the work that the math department at the high school has done in collaboration with our SVSU math coach, Pat Conway, in vetting out a primary resource for math. And that's been ongoing work with procurement and all sorts of really important things, including bringing in, when they have their finalists, to have our educational coordinator look at the resource to make sure that it could be run through the lens of equity. So I appreciate the collaborative work of the high school math department, Jonathan and Pat in that work. Mr. Payne?
So math for us, the middle school is a next step goal. We, it, in my, the outcome is to have it go in the same direction as ELA. And that we have an interventionist staffed already in the building, but building that resource that it's a consistent instruction at the, at the classroom level. And then interventions that we provide for kiddos are the interventions that they need and that we would be measuring that progress. So math is, like I said, it's a next thing for us. We do have pieces in place. And the goal is to bring it to the level of ELA. And there's definitely work to be done in this area, as we talked about data team earlier in ELA. Math is an area where students' achievement actually dipped during the COVID year, which is not surprising. It would not be a good expectation for moms and dads and families to teach conceptual math to their students at home. So that this is definitely an area of work that we're going to be focusing on as we go forward.
Mr. Nixon?
We're, our, our third goal is, is sort of hyphenated. It's math and science. And what we're going to be doing is math is very similar to ELA. We're going to be looking at data based on standardized testing, and we'd like to get into item analysis to, to determine where our weaknesses are. So for example, we've noticed in the past that modeling is a weakness in math. So how do we incorporate that in our instruction? So as our math teachers begin to look at not only what the final test score is, but to look at the individual areas where our, where we feel that our instruction needs to get stronger for students, or if we feel the instruction is strong to adjust it, because obviously the students aren't picking up on it. So, and looking at that, what we do in the forms of boosting math is working or not, such as Math Labs interventions, looking at the data before and after the interventions are put into place to see if they're effective enough or they have to be changed somehow. And at the same time, our science department is looking at some really fascinating ways of just reorganizing all of the standards and science to implement scientific thought throughout a three-year science, science program. And we'll have more on this for you probably during the next year. But there's some exciting things going on in the science department.
So the, the last section is as a result of the pandemic. And we, an, an addition to the continuous improvement plan process is recovery, which is how we are reacting to the pandemic. And so the Agency of Education defines recovery as mitigating the impact of the pandemic on the academic, social, and emotional well-being of our students. We know that this is going to take many years and that we are in the process of developing a plan linked to the focus areas identified by the state, social, emotional, mental health, and well-being, student re-engagement, academic achievement and growth, and staff well-being. Staff well-being is being addressed by the SVSU Health and Wellness Committee, which has reviewed staff survey data and made suggestions for the recovery plan. The other three initial pillars that I described are being examined by the SVSU recovery team, which has diverse representation from all of our buildings and our community. And we meet weekly to review data. The, the day, the little data that we have right now as, as an outcome of the pandemic and have held innovation sessions, and we're looking at this period of time as a place to be innovative. All the action steps that we're creating will link to the continuous improvement plan. The first requirement of the state recovery plan was to do an initial needs assessment, which was due to the state on April 15th. And so the committee reviewed the data that we could bring together from those three areas. So the first area was social, emotional, mental health and well-being. And we were able to implement the student risk screening, screening scale. We call it the SRSIE. We collected this data this year. It was different than it normally is because we, as you know, had students learning in different modes. We had some students that were remote. We had a hybrid, a hybrid phase. And, and then there was transitioning from a two-day hybrid to four days. So what we did, were able to pull out for grade six through 12, had a 3% of, of the student population at high risk for externalizing. Examples of externalizing behaviors are an aggressive behavior that we would see. And 9% of our student body were at high risk for internalizing. Some examples of internalizing behavior are sad. If we witnessed students that were sad, anxious, or lonely. We also had noticed that 80% of our students screened at low risk in both externalizing and internalizing behaviors during this period of time. We had 34 new pre-K through 12 homeless referrals that were, were made to the SVSU homeless liaison between August 24th and March 31st. And right now I currently sit in that role. For student re-engagement, we were able to look at K through 12 habits of work data, which is linked to the Vermont transferable skills. And so one, so one area that we were, we had a bit of data about where, where students were rarely or sometimes demonstrating responsibility. This is linked to the transferable skill around involved citizenship. So again, something to, to look at. We also noticed that the entire district student attendance decreased between September 2020 and January 2021. So again, things that the team looked at to then do some creative planning. And the last area that, that the recovery team has reviewed is academic achievement and growth. And the data that the team, we had, we had some internal data that we could look at for K through eight. The high school was remote for a, a chunk of the school year. And so we did not assess kids remotely unless it was something, a curriculum measure they were doing within their, the context of their class setting. So the data that we did look at through K through eight, we, we looked at a cohort of, of students from one year to the, to the next. And so in, in reading, when the recovery team looked at what data we could pull together, we noticed that there were two grade levels that had an increase of at-risk. And the two grades of concern right now are current first and current second graders. We were also concerned about the current at-risk percentage for our K, our students that are kindergartners this year. We were also concerned about the current at-risk percentage for our K, our students that are kindergarteners this year. And in the area of math, um only the current seventh grade had a decrease in at-risk percentages from last year to this current year. All other grades from first to eighth had an increase. We are also again concerned about our current uh kindergarten students. Once we completed the initial needs assessment, um referencing this data and submitted the plan, the last three weeks and we just finished the cycle a couple of days ago, um we're we're used to look at the continuous improvement plan and think about what else do we need to um implement in an action plan? And so now, over the course of the next week, we'll be developing the action plan, which the team will finalize next week. And that will be connected to how we use our our title, um grant money and our S R grant money that will will impact the investments that we we put forward this spring.
So she hands it back to me today so I can give you the putting the pieces together in the state of Vermont that um our framework is the educational quality standards. We're informed by the annual snapshot, which again, I would tell you that we've had the annual snapshot and it's public um for a few years with the caveat that there would only be partial data from last spring. Um and there are multiple feature uh data points that are in the annual snapshot beyond just S V data. Uh from both that and our three-year integrated field review that we did have, uh those went into our continuous improvement plans and our continuous improvement plans have goals. We monitor that progress and it's a three-year plan. We're in year one of that plan. That plan is the framework for the next steps for recovery for all of our learners. And again, I'll take any questions, but thank you so much for your time.
It's a lot to absorb, but I'm sure there are questions. Yeah, I'm gonna say, any hands up?
Jim, I don't know. Do I have, do I have a hand up?
That's what I'm looking. I don't see anybody. I don't see any. So.
I have a question.
Okay.
Uh wait a minute. I have a question.
Yeah, I hear, I said, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh I I'm anxious to 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 find out if we have any objective way to find out exactly where or as close as we can, where our kids are in relationship to where we could expect them to be if they hadn't gone through uh the pandemic uh situation over over the last year. And and I'm also interested in what we have planned and maybe this would be a better time during the principal's report to understand more fully what our summer program is, how many teachers we have that are involved with it, and what we're doing to bring students into makeup areas where they may have lost a little time.
Yeah, it's our summer recovery program and let's remember that the the goal is not to recover in one summer, what might have been lost during this year. It's a multi-year process and we are starting off slower this summer and then uh it, there will be recovery work built into next school year and even the following year. Uh either Laura or Melissa, you want to address to the board on uh the summer recovery? Um or the principles of what's going on in your building, whoever wants to address that. Laura?
I I could do that. I could just give the big, yeah, I can give the the big picture. Um so the the big picture again is that um that that is one of the expectations is to rethink how we do um use the summer as a as a one, one place where uh the students can have an opportunity to um uh show evidence towards standards that they might have missed um during this period of time. And so district-wide pre-K through twelve, each grade span is um has worked to develop a a small uh uh something, a a seed that we're planting that we can then build on over the course of the next three years using um some of the federal money, S R money um to support this work. And and part of it does require making sure that we have um highly qualified staff that would like to work um and support these initiatives during the summer months. And I will let uh Tim and Steve give you a little teeny snippets of just their grade spans.
Just a teeny snippet. Alright, so um as Laura said, you know, this uh summer, at this point, uh my principal brain is organized and trying to close this school year. So you're trying to take, you know, be as clear as possible of what have kids achieved during this school year. It's been a a different school year. And then the next project is the summer and as so, as Laura said, it, summer will look different. It's not summer school as, you know, I certainly experienced it where you might focus on seat time more than anything. Um so we've been very fortunate. We've had a a surprisingly large number of teachers who said, I'll do the work in the summer, approaching it very differently. They're going to be working in teams. It's going to be project-based. Kids are going to be uh working on things across uh multiple core subject areas. So it's not sit in a class for forty minutes for math, move across the hallway for English for forty minutes. I think it's very exciting. Uh the grant money that Laura has been wrangling allows us to do, address the transportation issue, which has been a longstanding barrier for kids accessing uh opportunities during the summer. Uh it allows us to hire more staff. Um so I mean, it, field trips, all kinds of good opportunities because really the focus is, and I I heard the chair's concern, the focus is trying to get kids engaged in school. It really trying to focus on kids who may not have been successful for a wide variety of reasons, making them feel like school is a place where they can be successful. Uh and covering academics as well, but that really the, any academic work that you're doing the summer is laying the foundation for next year, which is going to have to look different. There's definitely going to have to be work that for many, many students going back and reviewing current year standards and introducing them to next year's standards. Um but I think using summer as a as a practice place, not only for teaching, um but also for building community, I think can absolutely be applied to middle school up uh education next year. And I'm actually pretty excited because I'm seeing what the teacher, the teacher's excitement level is pretty high, like wow, we could really try some very different things and get some really cool outcomes. So I'm looking forward to that work. Laura, did you need me to add anything? We've 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 identified staff. Oh, I'm sorry. Can I ask, what, can I add one more thing? So we've identified staff. We know the timeframe that we're going to be doing. We know the approach that we're working on. It's not all done yet, but that's what we're working on. We've identified students. We're in the process of drafting an invitation letter, which Laura needs to sign off on. And our goal is to be sending that letter out to moms and dads and families starting next week, which means it's probably will arrive after the holiday. Um but it'll be an invitation for kids to participate in summer recovery and that's a good thing.
Great. Steve or Nancy, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think uh with our with our summer program, uh it's going to be a team-based and there's going to be social emotional component in it. And uh we're, right now, we have a minimal amount of uh of students because we haven't gotten the final grade yet to see uh who's going to be directed there. Uh but for next year, we're looking at a several-tier approach for uh for recovery. We're going to have a recovery built into the into the day uh every day. And we will have recovery after school for those who wish to do it that way along with the summer program. And uh so basically, it'll be a three-tier approach that we're we're using for recovery next year because again, um our number one focus is to make sure as as seniors go through that they're hitting the standards they need so they can graduate. And then uh it becomes a a more than one-year process of working with the other students to make sure they accumulate all the standards they need by the time they become seniors. So that's just a rough overview of what we're doing.
Laura, could I ask one more question?
Seen any other questions uh from anyone else, Tim?
I, well, I just have have one for Steve. I don't mean to dominate this. But Steve, do um, do we have enough faculty to 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 fully implement the programs that you would like to see run this summer?
Uh we're still in the process of identifying students, so we don't know how many students we have yet, Tim, to identify how many faculty members we will need. Uh but we should, we should figure that out in the next week or so.
Okay.
Tori, you're muted. Oh, now you're on. Go ahead, ask your question.
Uh yeah, I was just wondering also, what what does that mean exactly? Um or you said it was just a rough estimate right now, but what does it mean to be doing it uh to be doing recovery during the day next year? Do you, do you have any idea what that looks like right now?
Uh yeah, we uh, we tried to, we tried to uh create a recovery-only period throughout the course of the day. But we weren't able to get the schedule to work because our schedule also has to match uh with uh Southwest Tech to make sure that the students end at the same time, so that wasn't feasible. So what we're going to do is uh recovery will be built into first block on Mondays, second block on Tuesdays, third block on Thursdays, and fourth block on Fridays.
How's, what is, is that like a a ten, fifteen, twenty-minute period? What are we?
No, we're, we're, we're looking at about twenty-five to thirty minutes.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
That Tori? Yep. Alright, Tim, I'm not seeing any other hands on this question.
Jim, I I have one, I'm sorry to, anyway, I have one question for you. And that is, what do we look forward to in the fall in terms of uh student uh fully enrolled in the schools? Are we going to run the vote or what's going to happen?
Um so if we're done with the continent, uh the continuous improvement plan, I'll be happy. I'm gonna just give a couple of highlights of where we're going on all of that for next year. So I I'll do it now. One, I want, I want to say, I want to talk about what's happening right now. The, we all know that the CDC guidance changed abruptly last week. Uh Vermont A A O E has not changed their guidance yet, uh their guidance yet. Do we anticipate that it will? I do. I have a meeting with the Secretary of Education tomorrow and then that's always followed by Friday by the governor's news conference, so I suspect we may get some different guidance on what may impact the end of the year, or they may hold everything till July one. Um the Secretary of Education comments to us last Thursday, to superintendent's last Thursday, that he expects that uh, as I do, that students will be in school five days a week back to the regular start time. I, I anticipate uh that the physical distancing that um is currently in place will not be extended into the fall, which is important particularly and not so much to our elementary schools, but it's really has impacted the high school and um the middle school is to physically be the size populations that they had in their building, be able to keep them physically distant. So uh the indication that we have right now is that's going to expire. And um the remote option also will expire unless you're going to go through uh Vermont Virtual Learning Academy. But we would not be doing our own uh remote learning. That won't be an option. And um uh that necessarily is not our choice. That is coming from A O E, but that that guidance is coming. So I think, I think we will see um fall as normal uh as it was pre-COVID, with the exception that uh masks may be required inside the building. But um up until the CDC's abrupt change last week, uh what we were being told by A O E is that we were not going to get fall guidance until late um June, if not further. Uh but everything seems to be accelerating um at a more rapid pace right now, so we meet uh every week with the Secretary of Education for updates and then we we, we monitor the governor's press conferences where for where that goes. And as uh we're all, the the CDC's guidance is not necessarily A O E's guidance, so we have to go by what the A O E wants us to do. But I I think we're definitely, Tim, on track uh to get back to normal. And getting back to that, um you know, getting vaccinated plays a big part of it. And as we know, you know, that twelve uh and up can be vaccinated. And I just want to remind uh everybody that may not know that this Saturday uh at the uh former campus of the Southern Vermont uh college, uh the Southwest Vermont Healthcare Center will be vaccinating uh from eight AM to four PM. And I do think it's critical that um that we get the the more, if we want our opening in the fall to look like what we have all come to know what school is like, it's critical that we get uh as many people vaccinated. We will be sending flyers out um for all from fifth grade through grade twelve to uh help people. And just let me say here that anyone who may be listening, that they could go, you can go on to vermonthealth.gov COVID nineteen vaccine and register for Saturday here in Bennington. So um they are not full. The last time that I heard and our our nurses are also going to help and our public information coordinator uh to get that word out. Uh we did do a um a K twelve alert. Uh and then there was also a a town hall public meeting virtual on vaccination last night. I haven't heard yet how what that, what attendance looked like for that, but and I can't, I I don't imagine that this will be the last clinic, but um it it is um and it's the the twelve through eighteen-year-olds will be getting the Pfizer two-dose vaccine and over eighteen uh could get the one-shot Johnson and Johnson. Uh so um that's just round one of this clinic. So I think, Tim, I don't know if that answers, you know, your question, but our our goal is uh normal operations. As you know, sports teams are now, that has changed for V P A. They don't need to wear their mask for sporting events. So what this will, how this will impact to the uh graduation plans that have already been announced, uh we're going to wait to see the guidance that we get. So and uh
Thank you.
Alright.
Oh, oh, alright, we could.
Jackie has her hand up.
Did I miss uh, are you talking about graduation?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm maybe uh the principal will update you all when he gets to his report, but we you know, it, nothing has changed from what we told you last month on on graduation. And you know, if the state changes guidance in time that we can pivot and do it, uh we will. But yeah, we want this to be, you know, a great event for our students. Um all in years, all our, you know, the middle school also has their end-of-year activities as well as our elementary schools. But right now, that guidance in the year has not changed. So it's a a a for a ticket event outdoors with a rain date, four tickets per family. Um and there's other protocols in place, but that 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 could shift. Um and right now, the board, you know, you're not in the count to come to graduation. I know traditionally that you do. But uh there is, you know, a limit on that event, so we we just like, at this time, we don't have undergraduate chorus coming to sing. They're recording it as being presented, but uh right now, the board is not on the guest list. It's limited to families. That help Jackie?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, and I see that uh Dave Durfee has joined us. Uh I, he had let me know that uh that uh he was stuck on some legislative business, so. So.
Well, well, welcome back. I'd I'd like to, Jim, are there any other hands up? I don't, I don't.
No, I don't, I don't see anyone else.
Then, then if not, we'll move on then. Dave Frederickson, um are you going to report on the uh Spinelli Field Committee meeting?
I was going to comment on it, but.
Yeah, Mike Malloy is here to give that presentation. He's the chair of that committee.
Yep, very good. Thank you, Mike.
Hey, Tim, you can't even see me, huh?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were there.
No, no worries. Um, yeah, so I I'm the chairperson of the uh, the ad hoc committee that was formed last March and we met once and then we took a year and a month off. Uh and then we came back uh and met again in April. We, so we've met three times uh as a committee. Um I wrote down the report. I think everybody saw a copy of it. I I shared it with the, with Jim and he put it in the uh, in the agenda. Um so I'm not going to reread that to you. Um but I am here to answer questions. The one thing that I would say, and this was kind of guidance from uh the committee, one of, or really the most important thing that we uh, we wanted to do was make the field um more accessible um throughout the year. I mean, right now Spinelli Field is used uh for no practices and just football, boys soccer and girls soccer games in the fall. Um so total of maybe twenty to twenty-two events are on that field for an entire year. Um and one of the things that the committee wants to do is to make the whole, like just liven up the whole and and really refresh the whole uh complex. Um and it's a project that's probably ten to fifteen years late. Um it's probably, we've been, we've been hanging on, uh you know, it, I don't think anything's ever been done to that field since it was, since it was put in besides um just some, you know, kind of some patchwork and some, some uh, some minor fixes. Um and between the lights and the track and then every, in the shed and everything, um the whole, the whole complex um needs a a refresher. Um and I think And I think the big thing was can we get more use out of this, this field and really make it the complex, a community based, you know, obviously Mount Anthony first, but then have the community as well. So I'm open to any questions for people that have read the report and maybe had questions. I know Dave was on the committee and he's here. I know Susan was on the committee and she's here as well. So they can, they can answer some stuff too.
I have lots of questions.
Go ahead.
So, um, I, I have to background this with, I have a, one of my nieces is married to a coach for one of the Connecticut colleges who, who does soccer. So I also consulted with him as well. And what I've learned from my research was that we really shouldn't compare costs of an artificial field with a grass field. Because even the, the, there's a like five, it's cost five times the amount of a grass field, just to insert. And the other thing that I've noticed is that the, there are many more injuries because of cleats used and on the artificial grass for high school students because of their growth bones, et cetera. Because when their cleats go into the grass, the grass stops them i- in a wrong place, I guess. That's what the literature says. I mean, I don't know about that, but I, I do have.
More on the turf or more on the grass? Cause you said.
On the turf. On the turf. Yeah, I just had a nephew do something to his ACL. So maybe that's correct. The maintenance cost for an artificial turf versus grass is, is three times as much the cost. And you would think, oh yeah, getting the, the grass cutters out there and mowing and, and doing everything would cost much more. But evidently for an artificial turf surface, you have to vacuum it, you have to brush it, you have to deep break it, you have to disinfect it. You have to wash it. And then there's loose seams that have to be repaired constantly. And then if you get in chewing gum or candy, you have to physically go out there and pick up each piece with solvent. And according to this research, it, there's, it's more labor intensive. You're not just sitting on a mower and going out there. Then there's heat problems. Evidently it can get up. I don't know i- in this climate, if it would get up to 140 degrees Fahrenheit. But in the Midwest, it does get up to, in Iowa, it gets up to 140 degrees. And besides, you know, being overheated and everything, they get blisters on their feet. So that's the heat, then the, the safety, more injuries. Then I noticed, then they had a report.
Do you want me to respond to any of these or you just?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay, cause I'm, I'm taking notes. I'm taking notes.
Yeah, take notes. Then there was a report about the NFL players. And NFL players as of 2008 reported that 85% reported more injuries, 92% more soreness. 71% preferred the natural. As 92% said that the artificial turf shortened their careers. Then as of 2010, almost all teams on the baseball teams now play on natural turf. And teams such as the Reds, Phillies, Pirates, Cardinals, Mariners, et cetera. This, that's their last update on that one. And then the environmental one, and this is the one, I suppose I could, I could forgive everything else except for this environmental study. The environmental study said that the turf only lasts about 12 years. You know, aside from little mini repairs that you have to do. And the cost, the initial cost is like $5 per foot. And, but it also costs when you take it up. And then when you take it up, it, it, you have to dispose of it. Then it said, besides disposing of it, it, it adds mold and, oh, then driving across the field. If you drive across the field, that whole patch will have to be picked up and repaired. Then this costs like if you put down tarps or plywood, et cetera, then that's a cost. But it takes a hun, let me see, 1,861 trees to be planted to offset the carbon effect for artificial turf. Okay. And so then anyway, oh, so this, these several, several studies recommend, and I've never heard of this before, but natural, natural grass topped with sand on grass fields or, and and or sod replacement for heavy use areas such as, you know, where the H for the football goes. So that, those are my reports.
I, you know, let me, let me interrupt here ju- just for a minute. Jackie, I, I, it sounds as though you've done a lot of research and, and I'm sure that Mike has too. I, I certainly would encourage you to become a member of, of that committee and work out, discuss these things in the committee. That's the function of committees really. Is to go over the details, discuss them, take a look at opposite points of view and come back with a consensus. Rather than try to answer all, all of your questions, which certainly could very well be legitimate, probably are legitimate. But I'm not sure that this is the right form for that. Mike, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, no, all I'll say is the, the committee did talk about a lot of the things that, that Jackie, you know, brought up. And we did have, you know, reports from the, from our trainer as far as injuries go. And I do know that there's a lot of reports out there on, you know, turf. And the turf of the early 2000s is so, so very different than what, what's, what's happening out there today, you know? And so I just think that some of the stuff, some of the reports in the most recent stuff, you know, really, really looks at, at a different kind of perspective on things. And again, I, I can tell you this, like I would, I would 100% rather play a soccer game on a, on a grass field than on a turf field, 100%. But it, it's not going like for usability and for the fact that we can get so much more life out of the Spinelli complex. And you talked to Bern Burton, you talked to Rutland, you talked to South Burlington and Burlington who have the turf fields. They 100% are like, oh, it's, it's the best thing. You can do spring, you can do all your practices. It's going to preserve all the other fields, you know, to be able to, to, to convert that one field because practices, games in fall, in the spring, even baseball and softball could start. We wouldn't have to do those indoor gyms things. So I, rather than go through, I, I agree with you, Tim, go through everything. We did, just so the board knows, we did via the committee, and I know Susan has her hand up as well. Susan, I'll let you talk, but we did address a lot of, of what Jackie brought up.
Uh, in addition, did, did you know that Southern Vermont Medical Center is also putting out a survey as to how to use the fields up there? And they, they have a huge field and plus a baseball diamond, et cetera.
It's a gorgeous, I know that, yes.
Justin, I mean.
Su- Susan?
Yep, just another thing to consider. And I know there are a lot of other factors, but one thing we did not discuss at the committee level, but I wanted to bring up is the competitive advantage that other teams have to anybody at MAU who plays on turf. They, it's a totally different game playing on turf than it is on grass. And we're one of the few T, the few schools that do have grass still. I could go on, but I'm not going to.
Okay. Well, one thing, again, I, you know, I appreciate the interest that's shown in this. And Jackie, you, you certainly are an advocate for for many things that need to be clarified. And I hope that you will join that committee and become an active participant in it. And I, I know that Mike will, will do the research and, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of very active discussions during, during that committee meeting. Mike, I'm not sure if you've scheduled another meeting, but I would hope that you would reach out to Jackie and be sure that she is able to attend that next meeting if she, if she's willing to.
Yeah, we were, we, we tentatively scheduled one for the end of the, the month, but we were gonna wait till after this.
I will say this, the committee is defined, there's already like how many members are on it, but it's an open meeting. They pub, they, they warn their meetings just like your meetings. Anybody can go and talk and be heard, but the membership was defined when you formed the committee. So
Thank you, Jim. But, but Jackie, certainly you can attend and should attend because the, the points you raised certainly need to be answered. And, and Mike, Mike's a good fellow and, and you know, he'll, he'll work with you. He's, he's not, he listens, which is a great, great advantage. Okay. I think if there are no other things, yes.
I'd like to speak while I, while I'm in favor of this Spinelli improvement. And Jackie, a lot of the things you discussed, we, we talked about. We started right off with injuries. But anyhow, my perspective, I came to Mount Anthony the year that the school opened. And 30 something years later, when I retired, I jokingly said, I came with the building and now we both need a lot of repairs. Well, specifically Spinelli certainly needs a lot of repairs. Now I've had quite a few, but Spinelli hasn't. Now we're not talking about building some, like a Florida high school palace where they have more seats than they do have population. We're talking about giving our kids a safe place to play. Giving the place our community can utilize, giving our kids an opportunity to equally compete with other schools. I go to some other schools and when I go to Hartford, Rattleboro, Rutland, Bern Burton, I realize how far we've fallen behind. And I just think for a lot of reasons that I hope you would consider this something that we can do.
Thank you very much. I think we can move on then unless anybody else would, would like to speak to it.
Thanks. Yeah.
You have hands up. Dave Durfee and Susan have their hands up.
Okay. And, and my question is just where, where we are then in the process, the committee's been meeting. I, I'm not sure for how long and, and now has delivered the report. Mike, I guess it's a question for you. Were you expecting the committee to even meet again?
It's a good question. I think what we had hoped for was for, to answer any questions that you guys had, you know, today. And then, you know, be able to like, you know, kind of that's why I presented the.
I can address that. I, I think the hope of the committee is to bring it on the agenda next month for a vote with the board. That, you know, that's how far along the, the Smelly, the Spinelli Committee has been meeting. And, but I'll, I'll be honest with you, they, they probably wanted to bring it this month for a vote. But I suggested that committees should never vote the first time they're hearing it. So you're hearing it tonight. But and I also told the committee, it's always up to the will of the chair, what actually gets put onto the agenda. But I anticipate that they're going to ask this vote for the board to support it. That it would actually then go, you know, to a bond and that, Mike, you did have a timeline that for this project.
Yeah, we were hoping that before the summer, you know, before you guys left for the, for the summer at your last meeting, that you would either give a thumb, you know, a thumbs up approval to a bond vote. I mean, you're not approving the project, you're approving, asking the voters whether they would be in favor of the, of this project. We are then waiting for, you know, further development from M S K. We've met with them. They're kind of reworking based on our recommendation on, you know, an artificial turf. You know, kind of field. And then I think long term, we're hoping for a, a, a vote maybe by, you know, at the November, you know, you know, federal 2021 November election day to be able to vote on a, a, a bond for to, for the project. That, that's long term. That's kind of where we're at.
And then, thanks, thanks, Mike. And just, is there any more, and maybe Renee's got this, but financial backup to support the $3 million figure that you would share with the board for the next meeting?
I think we would have that, that for you, if you're going to vote. I don't know if we've got all the bond figures, like the final estimates from M S K yet for what this is going to cost. But and then so clearly, there still needs to be some work done, not all the information there, bring it back to you. And the, the board votes to whether they want it to go out for bond. And then the public gets to vote on whether they want to do the project. And the Spinelli Field Committee's role after that, if the board does support it, is going to be to inform the public about you know, I imagine there'd be community forums before this and to support it and educate the public and then let the public decide whether they want it, when they, whether they believe it's safe, whether they believe it's beneficial and what the, what, you know, what the so like the typical things that we've done with the bond in the past, Dave, like, you know, what, what does it cost to the average taxpayer and what will it be? I, I don't believe that work has been done yet.
And we, we've got more information that at least I as a board member want to have before I would vote on this. And I think that it's incumbent on Mike to, to bring that committee together again. And he certainly has an idea of some of the concerns that at least one board member has expressed. And also I think before we voted on it, we would want to have some idea of, of costs and, and all that sort of stuff. So I look forward to your next report.
Okay, yes, we will, we'll, we'll get back together as a, as a committee. And then hopefully, you know, be able to put, I guess, Jim, you know, share it with you. Have Tim put it, it, put the final kind of thing in the agenda in hopes for a, you know, a approval to go to bond. Again, you're not approving the project. You're just saying, hey, let, let's move it forward because we do think, and this is one of the concerns of the committee, that if we wait too much longer, then all, we're going to miss a whole, you know, another season type thing, you know, it just keeps, we just keep kicking the can a little bit. So it's a project that we wanted to get started, but then obviously the pandemic came. We're, we're looking to keep moving forward, but we will, we'll, we'll try to get you some more numbers. Is that what you're looking for, Tim?
Yes, yes. I, I, I think we certainly need some more numbers. And I think we need some clarification on some of the issues that Jackie has, has brought up. And I think the best way to do that is in, in your committee meeting and, and get a consensus of where, where the committee feels on those issues. So if everybody's comfortable, I'd like to move on. If we can move on, then we. Thanks, Mike. Ed- Education Committee, Carrie, are, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, Tim. Thank you.
Okay.
So the Education Committee met just prior to this meeting at 5 o'clock. We had a pretty full agenda. The first thing that we did was approve a new course at the high school called Popular Music. In place of drumming and a couple of courses at Southwest Tech that were not new, but are now designated with an art or tech credit. I'll just try to go over quickly what we, what we covered. We also talked about equity and diversity. Heard an overview of the background and the training of teachers from Melissa Senical, thank you. And heard about next steps from Equity Coordinator Jonathan Phipps and also heard a student perspective from Gavin Johnson and how he has been involved in the process on this as well. And that was a pretty productive discussion, I think. And lastly, we discussed the civics curriculum and where we stand with that now. Where civics is taught in the social studies curriculum as of now, and just the consideration of adding civics as a graduation requirement beyond its inclusion in the courses that are offered right now and the, the electives that students can take. And that's, that's an ongoing. So we got a lot of information and I'm, I'm thankful for everyone's. And that's, that's an ongoing. So we got a lot of information and I'm, I'm thankful for everyone's involvement.
Carrie, do you want the board to vote on those new courses that are, that are being offered?
We took a vote in the education committee. I'm not sure if we need to vote as a, as a whole board.
Yes, yes, we do. The education committee doesn't approve things. The board does. The education committee brings forth to the board their concern. Would you just, before we bring that to the board's attention, would you just go over a little more detail of what we're voting on?
Sure. And I don't know. So Nancy's not here anymore. So let me just.
What do you need, Carrie?
Basically, I, I can just jump in, Carrie.
Yeah, why don't you do that? I'm sorry. I accidentally closed what I had open that listed all those courses. So I didn't, I didn't have the specifics in front of me.
Sure. For the, for the high school, what we're, what we're doing is we used to have a course that was drumming and the instructor felt that it was, the focus was too narrow for what the student's interest was. So now we're changing the title of the course to Popular Music and he's broadening the scope to attract more students for that. So that's, that's the one course that we put forth from the high school. The other courses were Southwest Tech courses. These are, these courses do not need to be approved. They have been running for years. What needs to be approved is that Southwest Tech is asking that they would account for tech and art credit at the high school. And there was a variety of courses. I'm just doing this for memory. And that, so they're asking for that, that would count towards various credits such as art credit, tech credit or a elective credit.
Is this, is, is their request supported by, by you and the administration with Laura and all the other people involved?
Like those courses, those courses have always run. And one of the issues that we're currently having at the, at the high school is our art courses and our tech courses have been overbooked. And next year, we're adding a second tech teacher to account for that. And probably at some point will come before you and may ask for another art teacher because there's, the demand far exceeds the number of teachers we have. Our music department only has two teachers, our tech department had one teacher and our art department has three teachers. And that is a source for a large amount of electives and they are all graduation requirements for our students. So we support it because we need areas for our students to go to meet those graduation requirements. And like I said, we've added a second tech teacher next year and we'll probably be asking for an art teacher the year after.
All right. I just, I, I just, you know, I want to be sure that, that, that the high school maintains its, its basic curriculum. And if, if we do this sort of thing, does that mean that you would not pursue your interest in expanding the art and music departments at, at the high school?
No, because one of the focuses is the graphics program, which used to be a, a high school program. It's now a Southwest Tech program, but it's a program and programs do not draw as many students as, you know, the, the one, the one-time course over there. So you have to be, you have to be accepted into the program and I believe it's a two-year, two-year program. So it's more in-depth, but I do believe it, it, it takes less students. I mean, I'm not the expert on that, but I do believe that's how it, that's how it works. So that would still be freeing up students to come to, to our classes. I mean, there were other classes that went over there also that no longer exist. So there is a higher demand for students and courses that exist.
So I, Tim.
Yeah.
I think that the recommendation from the education committee stands. The board does not typically vote on, you know, course offerings. That's the administration does that?
No, 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 no. The, the, they'll know the board is, has always voted on courses. When they, when, when, new courses have been brought before the board and the board has, has voted on them. I, I'm pretty sure.
Brought for you and bought and, and you voted on it, but and that may be a tradition, but you know, I don't know if it's natural. I don't, I don't want to argue i- in a board meeting, but.
No, I don't either. I don't either. And, and I just assumed go through and.
You know, it's not policy or budget, which is, you know, your prerogative, but we'll just go ahead forward.
Yeah, what, I, I have no problem. I'd like to clarify that at, at a later date, but I agree with you, Jim. This is not the forum to do that. So I, let's just to, to keep it in context, we have two issues. One is the, the, the new music course that deals with drumming. Carrie, can you just be a little more specific before we ask for a motion?
Yeah, thank you, Tim. I, I found the documents. I'll just read off the courses if that helps. So the new course at the high school is Popular Music, which replaces drumming, as Steve said, to make it a more broad class with, with more broad appeal, I guess. And then the courses at Southwest Tech are Intro to TV and Video, which would have a half-tech credit. YouTube and TV Studio, which would have a half-tech credit. Personal Finance listed as a half-tech credit. Graphic Design Advanced, I'm, I think that's what that means, a half-tech or one art credit. Graphic Arts One, a half-tech and one art, which is, it's a 1.5 elective. And lastly, Adobe Photoshop, which is a current high school course with a technology designation.
Very good. And I, and my understanding is that the administration has been fully informed of these things and the committee itself supports them. So you would recommend that the committee support these, these courses?
Yes, we, yes, we voted on them and it was, everyone approved.
Very good. So I just have a motion to approve the, the course, courses outlined from the education committee.
Tomo.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, yes, Leon, just wanted to make sure these, the clarification, these are courses that are going to be listed in the MAU curriculum offering, but they are, sound like they are going to be taught at the tech center.
Some of them are.
Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to get clear on.
Yeah, the, Leon, the, the two, the two distinctions were there were two courses from the high school, which was the Popular Music course and the Adobe Photoshop designation. Those are high school taught courses. The other courses were put forth by Southwest Tech for that designation for the high school to award credit in those areas.
Okay, I'm good now.
Okay. Does, does anybody have any questions before we vote on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Very good. We can, we can move on then. Carrie, is there anything else? And I thank you for your efforts. It sounded, you had a, you had a lot on your agenda.
Yeah, nothing else for me. If there's any questions, maybe people can ask them, but nothing, nothing for me.
Great. Well, thank you very much. We now, we go to public comments. Jim, do we still have some people there?
I'm not seeing any.
We'll give it a minute. Are there any public comments? If not, we can go down to the new proposed position for Security Coordinator. Somebody like to explain that to us?
Yeah, I, I can do that.
Good. Thanks, Steve.
Now, a lot of this was before my time, so I'll try my best to explain it. It seems that I guess maybe 20 years ago, we had an employee who was the first, we have, we have a three-person security team at the high school. The one, the first person who started that team 20 years ago, she is still with us. But at the time, is my understanding, I guess there, there was no classification, job classification for security back then. So she was put into a contracted job classification, which didn't really fit what she was doing. I think she was listed as an intensive needs specialist. Then as the security team grew over the years, we, two other individuals were hired and they were, they were given contracts, off-contract. They were not a unionized contract. They were given two contracts to, to be security officials. But it didn't change the first person who was there. So over the years, the person who's actually been there, doing the job the longest and the first one on the job is actually stuck in a different pay scale and is making probably less than half of what the other two people are, are, are making.
Really is an equity piece, Steve.
Right. That's, that's the basis. We're trying to balance everything out and make it equitable so that she is now equivalent with the, the other two security officers.
So it, would this be a new position then, or is it just a new title or, or, or what?
Part, part of it.
It's just really a salary adjustment for who's already there to make them equitable to the, the other two that are doing the job. So, but, you know, not necessarily equal salary because there's different degrees and different qualifications, but it, it, as Steve said, you know, historically, they're paid in simple terms of how you pay to para, but that's not the job that they do. And the classification never existed. It's grown over time. So you're, you're not adding an employee, you're bringing the compensation up and making it equitable to two others.
I, I understand. So basically we're not adding a new position. We're simply making that position's compensation, what it should be, I guess.
Yeah, basically it's a reclassification.
Okay. Anybody have any question? Well, first of all, we have a motion to. Thank you. Do you have a second? Fran, second? Any, any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. Very good. We can move on then to finance, appointment of the MAU treasurer. I don't know how many, well, anyway, who, is Renee there to go over it? Jim, are you going to do it or who's going to introduce this person to us?
Renee and I interviewed. Yep, I can, I can go. Renee can jump in. We had one applicant for the position of the MAU treasurer. And that is Dave Durfee. And Renee and I interviewed Dave and found him to be qualified and we are recommending him to the board. Understand that he will serve in this position in the capacity until the next general election, which at that time he may decide to run or other people could run for it. But you're allowed to fill this position, reviewed it with our attorney. And Dave is aware that if you do appoint him to this position, he must leave the board. Anything else that you would like to add about maybe our interview with Mr. Durfee?
I would just like to know his qualifications for the position. I, I don't, I don't mean to be difficult. I just think that I would ask.
I, I think that that's fine, Tim. I think Dave may want to speak to that. Dave?
It's, it's.
Yeah.
Just going to say here, Leon, this is normally, we would normally have those things just documented as opposed to asking the person to give those to.
Well, normally you wouldn't have this. The public collects the treasurer. So the, the board typically never has any say in who is going to be the treasurer, what their qualifications are because the public votes to fill this position. So I, I don't know if Renee's here, but I, is she hearing us, Renee?
I, I am here, yes. I would just say that given, given this situation, we were actually at an advantage to be able to speak with Dave ahead of time to confirm that he actually does have experience. He's taking courses in school business finance. And we felt.
Renee, we can't hear you. I can't hear you anyway. I'm not sure if anybody else can.
I can, I can hear. I can hear.
I can hear. We, we all can except for you.
Can't hear Dave.
Okay. Sorry about that.
I'm sorry. No, I, I am having, my, my connection is unstable. It keeps popping up, so I apologize. But I just, I just wanted to say that typically we wouldn't have this opportunity to actually speak with a potential candidate because anybody can pull a petition and get on the ballot to do this job.
But we need, we need somebody that deals with, with the banks and arranges the amount of interest that we're going to pay on the loans that we have to take out before we get the money from the assessment from the different districts. And that, the individual treasurer has a lot of responsibility to be sure that that money is bowed properly. And if there is arbitrage to get, that we, that we get it.
And we, we had, we, when we met with Dave, we went over all aspects of the job and what was required of the treasurer and what he needed to be able to do and his availability to us, which again, as Renee would say, that we never get that opportunity for the treasurer who's elected at large.
Right.
Kevin, in any case, I'm happy to speak to it. And, and just, just to say, well, and I think these are good questions. I've served as treasurer for a number of organizations. I've got extensive experience with running financials for businesses and and bring a, a master's in business administration as well. I, I've spoken several times to the current treasurer, Gail, who's going to be stepping down in June, and she's offered to meet with whoever is ultimately appointed by the board to be the treasurer to make sure that there's a smooth transition. And specifically about the borrowing, which is, which, which is a normal annual event. There'll be plenty of assistance to make sure that that goes well.
I'd like to make a motion.
Very good. Thank you, Jackie. Well, let's hear, let's hear a motion. Go ahead, Jackie. What's your motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote, well, we vote positively for Dave Durfee to take over the position of treasurer.
I have one question, Jackie. Does that just, how long does that go, go for? In other words, if, if we do that, does he still have to apply? A march. Okay, very good march.
March, yep.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or do we have a second for that?
Second, Leon.
Thank you, Leon. Do we have any questions? All, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. Congratulations, Dave. I, I, let me give, I'll give you a call tomorrow to see what we want to do about replacing you, which is always going to be very difficult. But thank you.
I've consulted with our attorney on how that processes to fill his seat.
Good. Thank you. We'll, we'll get together then, Jim.
Yeah.
Jim, do you have any idea how long Gail has served as, maybe you could ask Nick to let me know if, if she falls under the general.
Renee may be able to tell you, but I think it would be nice, maybe if we invited her to the June meeting and you could thank her.
Yep, she took over in 2007.
And so she's been here, what was that, 15 years?
Fourteen years, yes.
Fourteen years, fourteen, fifteen years. Thank you very much. Okay, are there any other, let's see, treasures report? We just need.
I'll move it.
We have a second?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Move on, consent agenda. Fran, have a second?
Second it.
Second, any discussion on any of the, of the items in the consent agenda? If, if not, I, I, I just.
Well, yes, Leon, I, I just, we, we got a, a long time serving teacher that's retiring out. So from the high schools. So we want to make sure we recognize them to speak to that like we normally do.
Right. What, what we've asked to have happen is that if we have a teacher with over 15 years experience, relationship with the school, that Nick notifies me and then I get ahold of our, our clerk and ask her to, to write a letter. our clerk and, uh, ask her to, uh, to write a letter. So we, we, we will be doing that.
Okay.
Jim, would you just ask, um, uh, Nick to, uh, let me know?
No, it's not Nick. It's, it's not, as we said last month, the public, uh, information point at Katie West is coordinating that and she's helping with the, with the list for all the Boards, and she's gathering historical information on all the members to, I, I, on everyone who's retiring under those conditions to, uh, add a little more insight into, personal insight into the letter, so.
Well, that's great. So, so, just to be sure that someone will either let me or, or, or Carrie know and, and.
Yeah, I believe Carrie and Katie and Nick have been in communication, but I will double check tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other, uh, let's, all those in favor of the Consent Agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? Very good. We go down to the Administration's Report. We'll start off with Steve. Steve, are you there?
I'm there. Okay, thank you. Um, first off, I'd like to, uh, thank all the secretaries at the high school who, uh, who stood with me out in the, uh, the heat today as we, uh, we gave away caps and gowns and, uh, yearbooks and, uh, numerous trinkets to our graduating seniors. And, uh, we did that from nine until three today. And, uh, we had a good time and it was great to see all the kids who were very, very excited about what was going on. So I'd like to thank them for their hard work, for everything they did. Uh, the MAU Drama Club, the Patriot Players, will present Singing in the Rain Junior this week. Since it's not possible to have a live audience in the auditorium, they will record the performance and present the filmed production at an in-person outdoor red carpet premiere at the Park McCullough Mansion on Friday and Saturday night at dusk. Tickets are limited and reservations are required. The film production will also be available to stream in the comfort of your own home on Sunday evening at 6:00 PM and again at 7:30. Tickets and streaming passes can be purchased at www.showtics4you, that's a, the number four, for you and just the letter U, dot com slash events slash MAU. And I'd also like to thank Lynn Sweet for, uh, keeping the, the drama club and the chorus club and everything alive in the most difficult of situations this year. Uh, taking the kids out to the courtyard and socially distancing them to keep their, uh, their love of music or theater still alive. And, uh, this is all the product of Lynn's extremely hard work. So we thank her for everything that she did. Uh, this may attach itself, Jackie, to your question a little earlier. I'm going to give you, uh, some information. This was sent out to all of our parents about graduation, so I'll give you some specifics. Uh, graduation will be Friday, June 11th at 6:00 PM. The rain date will be Saturday, June 12th. Uh, the time will be determined for that. If it's moved to Saturday, the reason for that is I do believe there's a softball playoff game and we have to plan graduation around that, so all of our seniors can be at graduation. If by chance it rains on Saturday, we will move it to Sunday. If it rains on Sunday, we'll move it to Monday and we'll keep moving it until we get it done. Uh, parking lots will open at 3:30, uh, PM. And you must remain in your vehicle until the gates open to enter the field. Uh, the parking lots used, uh, for all of those, uh, with graduating students will be the Southwest Tech Parking Lot. And, uh, at, so that opens at 3:30. The gates will open at four o'clock. You must have a ticket in hand to enter. That's one thing that's different this year because of, uh, social distancing and COVID. Uh, this is a ticketed event. Each student will be receiving four tickets. Uh, once you hand in your ticket, you will then receive an, uh, wristband, and that wristband then gives you access to the football field. Uh, because it's a large perimeter and we have a limited number of officers and because of COVID protection, uh, if, if someone does not have that wristband on, they will be asked to leave. Uh, we ask that everyone, while they're waiting on line to get in, remember to maintain social distancing. Uh, there will be one entrance to the field only, and that will be at the main gate behind the gym. All of the entrances and exits will be open for departure, however. Uh, once on the field, you will be directed to the designated seating area where chairs will be spaced six feet apart. Uh, please do not bring your own chairs, uh, because we will have them for you. Masks must be worn during your time on campus. Handicapped parking will be available with an approved state placard visible in your window. Um, that parking will be on the other side of the building, right up near the gate, uh, which is basically right behind the, uh, the fencing on the field. You must stay seated during the entire ceremony. We will have a photographer and a videographer at the ceremony to capture the event. You will not be allowed to approach the stage for pictures or line up during the procession. Once the ceremony is over, the multiple gates will be opened and there will be no gathering after the ceremony to take place. So, uh, senior awards will be a virtual, uh, award ceremony again this year. That will be shown, uh, on June 9th at 6:00 PM. Students receiving awards will be given more information. All of the awards and certificates will be mailed after the awards night. Uh, graduation practice will be held on June 11th at 10:00 AM. And during the actual graduation, the students will receive, uh, will come up one at a time onto the stage. Uh, because of restrictions, I will be flying solo on stage again like last year. The students will come up, their name will be read. I will give them their diploma cover. Uh, then as they exit down the stairway, they will get a gift bag. And, um, there will be a professional photographer there to take their picture as they descend. And, uh, they are allowed to remove their masks while walking across the stage, so parents can get, uh, good pictures of them, but no handshakes will be allowed. So that's it. That's an overview of graduation. If anyone has any questions or anything about anything like that, I will gladly answer them for you.
So, I do, I have a question. Um, will, uh, cat TV and the media be allowed on high school property to record the event and take pictures and report on?
Yeah, that, that's going to be operated the same as it was last year's, uh, graduation. There'll be assigned spots for that. So cat TV traditionally has their, uh, their camera. They will be there. They have their camera in the center aisle, uh, shooting directly at the stage. Uh, we are also going to have a videographer there who is taking, uh, a video as we did last year, and then they will compile a DVD for all of our students as a souvenir. And, uh, the Bennington Banner will be there to take pictures as well. So, yes, the media will be there.
Thank you.
Uh, as always, the question, uh, what role the Board members are going to play in this, uh.
Uh, maybe you weren't here, Leon, during my report. I said, as of right now, Board members will not be present at the meeting unless guidance from AOE changes as far as how many people we can have there. Right now, there's a limit on capacity.
So, okay.
Anticipate that guidance may change before then, but right now, no.
Oh, okay. I, I heard what you said, yeah.
Thank you, Leon.
Any other questions? Well, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, Tim?
Yep. So, uh, I can, I have a couple of thank yous and a couple of updates, and I'll make this report quick. Uh, I want to thank Hannah Green. She's a school counselor at the middle school and Sally Bisacchio, who is a tech integrationist who, uh, works with the building. Uh, they helped organize a virtual career fair at the middle school this year. We've traditionally hosted a in-person event. Uh, they created a website. There were more than 60 videos available. And it actually turned out to be a very positive opportunity for us, uh, as we were able to include, uh, a much bigger geographical area as far as folks who participated. Students were, uh, invited to, uh, seek things they were interested in. Uh, we encouraged them to look at a couple of professions in areas of arts and media, business management, health sciences. Uh, and they did this during their advisory, um, block, which is a daily opportunity for them. So I just want to thank Hannah and Sally. A lot of time and effort goes into this. A lot of coordination with the community, and I also want to thank all the community members who helped participate and make it a, a meaningful conversation, uh, for the middle school students. I also want to thank, uh, Glauco Koomans, who is, uh, Prevention Coordinator, um, at the middle school. She, uh, is an advisor to our youth leadership group. They work closely with Community Partner of the Alliance for Community Transformations. Uh, and they presented results from the 2019 Middle School Youth Risk Survey with a focus on substance abuse and suicide prevention. They hosted a virtual community dialogue on May 11th, uh, and I was able to attend that. I was really impressed, uh, with the students, uh, going through the data, presenting a very positive message out of that, including a reminder that a vast majority of the students in our community make healthy choices on a daily basis. Um, they also used, uh, their time with Glauca to promote a social media campaign, which was shared with advisory on a daily, on a weekly basis with students. Uh, and you can find more information, uh, in the weekly newsletter that the SASU publishes every Friday. It was, uh, links to their presentation and information was, uh, featured last week. Uh, we've covered the summer recovery update, so I don't feel folks need to listen to me repeat that. Um, eighth grade, uh, we do have traditionally an eighth grade celebration. Uh, not on the scale of the high school, absolutely not. Uh, but what we are going to be doing is we're going to be hosting a family parade as we did last year. That parade is scheduled for Monday, the 7th, starting at 6:00 PM at the middle school. We have a rain date scheduled for the same exact time the next day, Tuesday, the 8th. Students and their families are absolutely invited to participate. We're going to be sending out more information, uh, trying to make a schedule plan so that folks arrive in waves and we don't create a traffic, uh, concern on East Road. Uh, we are not doing the traditional celebration of a mass gathering on campus. We don't have the facility, um, as the high school does to fence the area off and ensure that only ticketed individuals would be attending. So, um, a parade will be a return, uh, this year, and we're looking forward to it. It was a very positive experience last year. Had great turnout, kids dressed up, parents, uh, decorated cars. We had a really good showing, uh, of students, so we look forward to that. And, uh, the parent group will be handing out a, a gift to each one of our eighth graders. So we're looking forward to that and crossing our fingers for another nice night of weather. Um, just two other quick things. I want to thank Ashley Hoyt, Athletic Director at the high school, uh, for supporting, um, spring sports and having senior nights on Spinelli Field. It was nice to attend last night, track and field, senior night. Um, really well attended. Uh, Amanda Mullen and Jokers did an outstanding job recognizing athletes and their families. Uh, it was a nice to be part of that. Uh, it was a great way to view races with the lights on, and we appreciate the effort as spring sports don't traditionally, uh, get featured on the field. Um, I also want to thank Steve. I'm looking forward to high school graduation because I possess one of the hottest tickets in town, I guess, according to his report. And I look forward to attending the high school graduation this year.
Um, Susan, you have your hand up. Is it, is it up from the last one or do you have a question?
Oh, it's still up from the last one. My apologies.
Okay, just, just checking.
Happy to take any questions folks might have.
Are there any questions for either Steve or, or Tim? If not, we can move on then to the, to the chairs.
I'm not seeing any, Tim.
Thank you. Uh, Chairs Report, I'd just like to remind you that we will, excuse me, we will have a meeting in June. Uh, we will not have a meeting unless the situation presents itself where we feel we should have one in July. And we will have a meeting in, in August. Uh, committees, uh, can meet as, as they see fit during, during that, uh, during any, any time. Um, also, I'd like to just reassure people that are interested in the programs that we've been supporting in agriculture and food service. We haven't had a report from them recently, but I did speak with Carrie. And I know that Ron Higgins has also been very interested in that. And I just, uh, assure you that, um, there are still a lot of things that are taking place in those areas with, with the gardens and, and all that. And we'll be able to hopefully report more about them, uh, at our next meeting. Okay, if there are other, no other questions, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much.